Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, March 8th, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith, Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before a city council and profanity is not permitted. After you are called, please restate your name and neighborhood. For the record, you'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsuver, Belfast, Northern Ireland. Global Intelligence Society U.S. National Candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. Concern of this council is clearly with the Irish in this descent in Pittsburgh, with the parade and everything on people's minds yesterday. A few dates, 31 August 1913 in Dublin, 31 November 1920 Dublin, 10 July 1921 Belfast, and 30 January 1972 Belfast, and then as a follow-up, 21 July 1972 in Dublin. Sundays, bloody Sundays. There was no mention yesterday that there are actually orange Irish, that there are black Irish, that there are Asian Irish, Latin Irish, people who have been born in Ireland, in the Republic of Ireland and in Northern Ireland who are actually Irish. There was no diversity that was identified whatsoever. I find this particularly disturbing since this is sponsored by and in some way monetarily supported by this council. On the 6th of March, I was in Homewood at the CLP on Hamilton, and I asked us to ask how many books excluding children's books that they had there, and they didn't know. They don't know how many books are in the Hill at Kirkpatrick and Center as well. I don't understand this. No computer call-up, there was no evidence of any data sophistication whatsoever. Their guesstimate, it took about 15 minutes for them to go around and try to find out by guessing, by estimating, and they came up with the number 15,000. Well, I had been in the math section, and there are 30. That means that 0.2% of the books in the library in Homewood focus on math, and they included Math for Dummies books. I find this particularly objectionable because the young people who are predominantly black in Homewood need a signal to be sent to them by Mr. Ganey and by Mr. Lavelle and by Mr. Burgess in particular that math matters.
Our next speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here. I honor my husband, who was a true City of Pittsburgh public servant from the 1970s until 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. We, the people of Bon Air, are the real stakeholders. We have paid our mortgages, taxes, and voted. We have shown up at the town hall meeting to give a resounding no to developing the building. We have signed a petition to say we want a green space. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. We do not consent to a detrimental building remaining and decaying in the community we have built and maintained. Former Mayor Paduto was defeated and left in disgrace. He appointed a panel that claimed the Bon Air Elementary School building should remain. We, the people of Bon Air, have driven past former school buildings and heard the stories of defecation in the hallways and criminal acts around those buildings. We, the people, say no to any use of the school except to be torn down and become a green space. This was read at my husband's funeral. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loves sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first names and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life and his obituaries are accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. The opportunity is here and now to create a green space by condemning and tearing down the detrimental building that has created a threat to the peace, safety, and happiness of our community. We, after having three youth taken out of the...
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Pomaay Chakman Yahali.
My cack, all ca- greetings. Peace, love, and light. My title is Pomaay Chakmam Yahali. I'm calling today to just put some things on the record and just to make sure that the message that I send to you is clear. We need to understand, and everyone needs to be clear, that there is a genocide being waged upon our people on our own lands as the Aboriginal American Indians, the indigenous, the autochthonous of this, the Americas. And our genocide looks very different than what people traditionally understand genocide to be. So genocide for us is us being reclassified over countless times throughout the decades here since the colonists gained their independence and turned on our people who assisted them in gaining their independence. This is all recorded in congressional records and archives from all, many of the countries around the globe. There were authors that wrote during those times, and they wrote the story correctly, not the narratives that get spun in social media and the narratives that get spun on movies such as Roots that didn't exist, such as 30 Years a Slave that didn't exist. And these things we can validate. Those are fiction. What is truth is that the Aborigines were reclassified as Indians and then reclassified again as colored and colors, then Negro, then Black, and now African-American and back around the people of color. Now, I am not here to speak on behalf of people who identify as Black or African-American, and they may have those roots and those lineages that can tie them back to Africa or a slave ship. What I will say is the majority of the people that I grew up with in the city of Pittsburgh, in the east end of this area, we all refer to ourselves as Indians. And this is in the 60s, this is in the 70s, and it changed in the early 70s because a lot of our people referred to themselves as Negro. And Negro is associated with Indian because Negro in this context of the America stands for the Indians. This is hidden terminology in plain view. So I'm not going to allow any narratives to continue to be spun on the land of my ancestors. And as we do outreach and engage with our people in our communities that identify as Black and African-American, we're hearing a different story. We're hearing a story, yes, my grandmother was Indian, my great-grandmother, they said she was Choctaw, Chickasaw, Arawak, Tiino. And we didn't even call ourselves those terms either, I'll be clear. Those are all foreign terms. Cherokee means dog trap in the language that it comes from. It's French. Choctaw means flathead. We would have never called ourselves these things, but we accepted them in attempting to have a peace and friendship relationship with your ancestors who betrayed us. So moving forward...
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Bill Schlatterner.
Good morning, council members. My name is Bill Schlatter, and I'm a resident of Mount Washington. I'll be pretty brief this morning. I think you all know what I'm going to talk about. I talk about it every time this bill is up on the docket, which is around the short-term rental bill. I continue to request that the appropriate amendments be put forth in there, that primary residents be required for Airbnb's or even secondary. One of the reasons why this bill that you have in front of you at the moment is not a very good bill is that it really gives more ownership to the corporations which many cities like Denver, Philadelphia, Nashville saw that as really bad for the community. And what ended up happening was they bought up building after building after building, which is happening in Mount Washington. And that fueled a housing crisis in the rental market and in the housing market. And I think we really need to consider the impact of Airbnb's and other short-term rentals that they're having on our community. And you have the opportunity to change that. And additionally, the bill before you does not get into multi-units. Right now, Mount Washington in particular, areas are zoned not to be hotels. But when you have multi-units that are just filled with apartments, or not really apartments, but Airbnb's, that is really a slight around the zoning laws, and it gets into really going around our current promises to the community. So I really hope that you're able to really move forward on that. I understand the government sometimes runs a little slow, but 11 months, moving on a year now, on a bill that was promised to move quickly is a little disheartening. And it is also the reason why, you know, like Bill Paduto, he got, ended up getting elected out because people didn't feel he was effective or efficient in connecting with the community in his final term. And I think, at least in Mount Washington, there's a vibe that there is a lack of absence, and things aren't really moving quickly. And so I hope today is the day that you move forward with the Airbnb bill. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to speak? Please come forward at this time. Anyone in chambers wishing to speak? If not, that'll take us to our standing committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. Our first deferred paper is Bill 1108.
Bill 1108, ordinance amending Title II, Article V, Chapter 237, Stop the Violence Fund, Section 237.03, users and uses and restrictions of the Stop the Violence Fund, directing the mayor's designee thereunder, the Office of Management and Budget, and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to utilize a reporting form approved by city councils to ensure proper and legal use of said funds by grantees thereunder in accordance with ordinance 237, Stop the Violence Fund of the City of Pittsburgh Code.
Motion to hold one week. Oh, I'm sorry. I know councilman was on. Go ahead, councilman.
Madam President.
Hi. I just want to...
Motion to approve. I'll defer to you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I just really want to make a motion to hold for one week. Ricky Moody and Jay Gilmer and Assistant Director Jones have done a tremendous amount of work on this, and they put together a really nice piece, but I need to attach it to the bill. So I'm going to make sure we do that for next week. So motion to hold one week.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill be held one week. That takes us to Bill 1253.
Bill 1253, resolution authorizing the issuance of two warrants, $15,000 each, in connection with an EEOC matter for a total amount of $30,000 in full and final settlement of litigation including attorney's fees.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1254.
Bill 1254, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Mary Ann Organ and Eugene Organ, her husband, and their attorneys, Edgar Snyder and Associates, in the amount of $75,000 relating to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Madam Clerk, if you could read Bill 1272 and 1273 together. Both are accepting new K-9 dogs.
Bill 1272, resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210, acceptance of the gifts to the city of the city code, the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from Global K-9 Protection Group valued at $10,000 for a pre-trained explosive detection K-9. And Bill Number 1273, resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210, acceptance of gifts to the city of the city code, the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from AMGARD of $7,900 for the purchase of a K-9 for the Bureau of Police.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
With discussion, Councilwoman?
I just had a que- is this, so are we talking about two, two dogs here?
Yes.
Yes.
Our current ones are actually retiring.
Okay.
And so these are new dogs at no cost to the city.
Okay, great. And then later on, there's another, and I assume it's the same, the $7,900.
Yes.
Later on, from Von der House, skilled German Shepherds. Yep?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Madam, uh, sorry. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I'm just curious how that works. So is there's like a national organization that raises money for donating K-9s? Is it, did we solicit, was it a competitive grant? I don't know about these things.
They come to the table? More Budget Office can come too. Rhea, do you want to come to the table too? Can you explain a little bit? Oh, here, somebody from the mayor's office.
And if you will introduce yourselves just for the public record.
I'm Sergeant Bob DiJocmo with the City Police K-9 Unit.
And so my question is kind of like, is this something that kind of every police department does, and is this kind of a national organization, or was this something that the Pittsburgh Police uniquely found? Like, oh, we are losing two of our K-9s, we want to replace them, let's find money, or?
These two companies actually approached us. AMGARD has donated a K-9 in the past. So they approached us. They had donated one, I believe, about five years ago.
Who's AMGARD?
Uh, they're a security comp- uh, I believe they're a security company, like armored car company. I don't know if they do it nationwide. I just know they, they had done it for us in the past, and they were asking if we need another one. And we have several that are, we call them aging out, that are ready to retire and get replaced. And the other company, Global Assets, they had a dog that was pre-trained, that they had no longer needed. Their handler had moved on. So what they did was they contacted, they contacted us. There was some connection between one of our handlers and that company is why they reached out to us to see if we could take on that dog. And again, it was at no cost us. That dog's actually pre-trained.
And so, Rhea, sorry, if you could identify yourself for the record.
Rhea Price, Deputy Director, City Council Budget Office.
Rhea Price, I didn't quite catch the, AMGARD was the one company. I didn't catch really the name of the other one. Are these companies that the city does business with?
Um, I can't answer that question right now. I can check on that for you.
Right, right. Because I don't know if it's usual or unusual for companies that the city does business with to kind of then provide gifts to city departments.
I know in the past, we have received grant funds from organizations for K-9s.
But we don't know if those donations were from companies that maybe receive contracts or other services in a competitive, some other competitive bid process.
Right. I can't answer that right now, but I can get that information to you.
Yeah, but that's the only concern I have. I'm glad that we're just kind of replacing.
I can pretty much tell you for sure that the Global Assets, the city doesn't do business with. It's not, it's not a company that we would require their, we wouldn't require their services. They're a, they contract with TSA and some other private companies to do their explosive sweeps for their, for their properties or businesses. So they, we wouldn't be using those, them.
Explosive sweeps. And how, that means, I know that, as you mentioned, that you're losing two of the K-9s. So that means we have, like, how many do we usually have?
We would actually be keeping it at 15. We have 15 right now.
And that, is that about a normal size for a city our size?
Uh, it's probably a little less than cities our size.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all that kind of occurred to me about this. I don't have any more questions. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Madam President and Councilman Coghill?
I just briefly wanted to, I know Councilwoman Gross and I have a lot of concerns about accepting gifts and grants without coming through city council. But for this one, I actually would just have a question. I'm curious, because we keep hearing, it's for dogs that can detect explosives, correct? You don't use them on people or anything like that, right?
No, our dogs aren't trained to, to use them on people now.
That's what I thought. And so could it, so we keep hearing a lot about water and infrastructure and places, could it protect some places like that? Could it detect explosive and something like that? Maybe you don't want to discuss that publicly, but...
What we use our, what we use our explosively trained K-9s for, like, we'll have a couple out during the St. Patrick's Day Parade, we'll sweep the route along with the bomb squad, we sweep, sweep the whole route. When the president comes, we use them for, for that. We use them in Heinz Field or Akershire Stadium when, when they, they...
We all have to get used to that.
Yeah, right. When they request them, a lot of special events get swept that probably people aren't even aware.
Yeah.
And also, most, the majority of our explosive dogs are also trained to search for guns so in abandoned houses, or if they think someone dropped one in the weeds, or those dogs are also trained to do that. But our, our dogs aren't trained to, none of them narcotics or explosive dogs are trained on, for people.
Okay.
To search people.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill?
Yep. Thanks. Thanks for being here, Bob.
Sure.
I, Council President Smith just kind of, you know, asked the same question I was thinking, but are the dogs like our police officers trained in certain areas? So I know these K-9s detect explosives, guns, drugs?
Uh, they're not, they can't be dual-trained. So we have separate, they cannot be. So we have separate dogs that detect narcotics. I want to say we're at 10 and 5 right now.
10 narcotics?
We're at 5 narcotics and 10 explosive dogs.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, that was it. Thank you.
Guess you can't teach an old dog new tricks.
That was low-hanging fruit for her. Come on.
Um, I just, is, is Zane one of the dogs that's retiring?
Zane is not one of the dogs that are retiring. Zane will be around for a little while longer.
The children of Swirl Hill and Greenfield will be there.
Yeah, Zane will be around for a little while longer.
What happens to the retiring dogs?
Uh, they get the op, their handler gets the option to take custody of them. We sign them over to them. We actually have, if the handler, a lot of the handlers take on a second dog, so they don't really want to have that second dog around. So there's people around that'll take them, and, you know, the city signs them over, releases all the liability to, to the person that's taking them. But we give the handler the first choice to, to keep them.
Okay, great.
I know Commander Ripple took his dog home once, and I just want to say, I think he did it to keep me away from his house because he lives in the Army.
Yeah, we also have, we have a bloodhound. We have an electronic detection dog that goes out for, goes out for different cases. It can detect Apple AirTags, stuff like that. And those are the other two specialty do- and we have a, did I say we have a bloodhound also? So those are the other specialty dogs we have. And those, those dogs are assigned to our K-9 trainers, so they are used as needed.
It'd be my interest, what all does the electronic dog do?
Robot dogs.
No, so for, for, so they'll go assist, they'll go assist different agencies, like, they do a lot of Megan's Law, when, when they're looking for, oh yeah, when they're looking for computer stuff, things like that, that's what that dog will, what that dog's trained to do.
Thank you.
And we got, the city got that dog for free also. The city got, was approached a couple of years ago for that dog, so.
You're saving all this money, so now you've got a nice contract.
That's thanks to everybody here.
Any further discussion?
Just real quick. So the, the robot, the electronic dog is a real dog?
That is absolutely a real dog.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And as far as like, say, if we have an earthquake and, you know, we have to look for deceased people, are they trained for that as well?
Our dogs are not. We would defer out to the urban search and rescue people. We defer out to those. We don't have that capabilities.
Thank you, Bob.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation on both bills. Thank you for being here. That takes us to Bill 1274.
Be safe.
Bill 1274, resolution authorizing eight open-end professional services agreements with multiple vendors to provide professional services on an on-call basis as required related to art and memorial preservation and conservation services as needed by the various departments of the city of Pittsburgh. Each agreement being at an amount not to exceed $500,000 annually for a two-year term with up to two additional one-year options and providing for funding of the costs thereof.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Gross?
Sorry, but you do it.
No, go ahead. I'm good.
Sure. So I'm excited to see this because we have, I think, a lot of us in different council districts have had requests for restoration work on memorials or art in our, you know, even tiny, some of us have like memorials in like street intersections almost, they're not even like large parks. And so I wouldn't mind hearing a little more detail about this if other members are interested. Do we have someone in chambers to talk to it?
Yes.
Oh, hello. Come on up to the table.
They look so nervous when we call them to the table. I was going to say, we're nice.
So you can just identify yourself and your title for us, and then we'll ask you some questions.
Joshua Lamondi, Senior Sourcing Specialist, OMB.
Great, great. So I am kind of like thumbing through the pages of the various professional services agreements, but I don't see any specific sites popping out. So can you tell us kind of, this is $500,000. So how far do you expect it to go? And how, are the sites selected, or will you be selecting sites?
Sites will be selected. So traditionally, there's a couple of different facets to that question. Traditionally, how I understand it to be happening in the planning, in the Department of Planning, is that these were always put out for bid. Since it's a professional services agreement, they never cost too much to really subject them to EORC approval or stricter standards of scrutiny in an effort to kind of address those concerns of the different communities where these conservation efforts need to be put in place now rather than later. After a lengthy RFP process, we set out the ITQ where we got all of these responses. So with that being said, there's not any sites determined right now. These are just so that we can have these on-call services before the landmarks and memorials and whatnot deteriorate further. To speak to the $500,000 limit that you discussed, this is just the original ITQ template. I am modifying the template with law's approval. I have been working with law to modify the ITQ template to pare it down from its original purpose as an engineering and larger project template to make it more, more fitting and more tailored to these artists that are becoming in and doing it. So, long story short, no, I do not anticipate us bumping up against that $500,000 annual threshold. Most of these projects will be $10,000 to $20,000 and under.
I actually did not catch this. This is a $500,000 annually for a two-year term. So that is a million dollars total.
No, no, it's $500,000 annually per year. They cannot go over that $500,000 threshold per year.
Annually for a two-year term with up to two additional one-year options, providing for funding of the cost thereof.
That is correct. So it would be $500,000 in year one, $500,000 in year two.
So it's a million dollars total.
A mil, a million dollars available, yes.
Got it.
Yes.
Thank you. And so when, we often, in fact, I think last week we were using the term RFQ. Are you meaning the same thing with ITQ as RFQ?
No.
Could you explain the difference?
Yes. So an RFQ is for a one-time purchase of anything under $30,000. That is a commodity or a non-professional service.
And it means what the, I thought it was Request for Qualifications.
No, that is a Request for Quote. An RFQ is a Request for Quote.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. And this is an invitation to qualify. So it's as, what I was kind of thinking of last week when I used the wrong acronym, right?
There's a, there's a lot of them.
You were kind of like pre-vetting a company so that you don't, they don't have to apply like a, like that we, we don't have, know their background or qualifications, so that you kind of expedite the process of awarding the contract.
They are, they are not retained per se, but they are, they are on-call.
Known, yes.
Yeah, they're on-call. We don't have to go through every time that a statue loses an arm or something. We don't have to call out an entire RFP process for six months before it, or six weeks before it gets worse.
That's fantastic. And so do you, you said that a lot of times the work isn't a large dollar amount. And so are you, is there an average amount you have in mind? So like, how far is $500,000 a year going to go?
It's going to cover the entirety of all these projects.
That's amazing. How many, how many memorials, is it just, does it say just, it says Art and Memorial Preservation and Conservation Services. So how many art and memorial sites do we have?
We are currently doing an RFP for that right now, to do an audit of the...
So we're doing an inventory, because we don't really actually know.
Correct.
I'm, I'm really enthusiastic about this. I appreciate it. I think that's all I've got, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I, just on the same thoughts, the memorials, I would like a list. How, how long do you anticipate before you have a complete inventory?
We are in the final stages of awarding someone right now. So the project is about to kick off. It is not...
And how long does it take to estimate? I, I won't hold you to it.
No, it's fine. Um, I believe it's going to be several months.
Seven months.
Several, several months.
So I wonder why we're voting for this first and not waiting to see what we need? What if we need more funding? Or less funding? What happens to the funds?
So we could certainly pare these agreements down if needed. It is, again, this is just the, this is the original ITQ template in terms of where those, those annual limits are. So we hadn't seen a need to alter that as well. In order to keep, because these, these invitation to qualify contracts, the intention is to keep them as uniform as possible without obviously going overboard.
So for me, I, I kind of want to make sure that I know that some of the, the sites in district two, there's not a lot of art in district two. There's some in Mount Wishington. There's not a lot there either.
Sure.
But there's some. But there's almost none in any of the western neighborhoods, almost none, and in Banksville. But for me, there's a lot of memorials. And there's one in Esplan that McKees Rocks has been taking care of for us for years. And DPW takes care of everything else, but for the one in Esplan, we now have somebody from Sheridan who's taking care of it. But it would be nice to make sure that that area is not forgotten. But I also am curious if it includes the art, includes the natural springs and those places where, you know, we identified several of them. I think it was six or seven of them. Still waiting for the one to be completed in my district in Oakwood in East Carnegie and between the two neighborhoods on Mirage Road. So I'd like to know a little bit more about that and if it would include those springs. So before next week, if you don't have the answer today, if you could just get it to me before next week.
Absolutely. I mean, I'm fairly confident that it will. Anything that's under the city's purview in terms of, it's their property, it's their art or memorial, I'm confident that it will fall under the scope.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Rossberger?
Oh, thank you. Were you first?
No, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for being here. And this is an interesting conversation. I, I couldn't help but hear the last thing you said was that we're conducting an RFP. Can you clarify that to identify all of the locations, all of the locations, like an exhaustive set of locations for public art and what memorials?
It is, and I'm pulling it up right now, so I just want to make sure I don't misspeak here. It is an, it is an audit for basically an inventory of all of our, our installations, anything that we've commissioned over the years. We have these call for artists that come up from time to time. I was, I did a lot of them last year. It is to do an inventory of all of our city art assets, if you will. And a secondary phase of that is to kind of do a, do a, do an analysis as to how the work has been distributed and awarded. So how many women artists have we, have we awarded to? How many minority artists have we awarded to? In order to kind of gain a picture of where we stand and where we should be in terms of equitably awarding these contracts or these commissions or whatever.
Okay. I'm looking at a GIS map that we have that lists the locations of maybe some, but not all of these, the modern art, contemporary public art, and the war memorials and honor rolls. But what I'm hearing, and so I just want to say it back to you to make sure I have it right, is that this would be, we, just because we're going to be expending taxpayer dollars on this, that we would be digging into it not only to create an inventory potentially like on their current conditions, but looking into the process by which we awarded those sort of...
Correct. That is correct.
Are those, those bids, so, or those competitively bid contracts, so that we can understand how equitable, how equity...
How they shook out, rather.
Yeah, played into the decision-making process. Do I have that basically right?
That's, that's correct, yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're not spending money on something that we've already essentially done.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. So with this, would these funds also go toward, I mean, in addition to preserving the art and memorials themselves, just the space around them? So I'm asking, just for example, in my neighborhood, there is, there's a, a war memorial, and I know that the local Slavonic club mows the grass and does the flags and does the, you know, and they do all that on their own, on their own dime, because to apply for anything would be too complicated. So, and not that they don't want, I mean, I'm sure they're happy to do it, but it'd be nice if...
We could explore that option. I'd be inclined to say this would not cover those services, solely because this is intended to be for professional services only, where a certain degree of licensure is required. And, you know, when it comes to art mediums, whether it be granite, whether it be a different type of stone, whether it be a canvas hanging piece of art, there's different, there's different methodologies to how you are to take care of it and conserve it and preserve it. With that being said, I don't really think we'd be wise to use these funds for, for grass cutting and things like that. If it's, if it is, if it's the base of the memorial, if it's the walkway leading up to it, if it's something that's a more permanent than grass and requires a little more, again, licensed attention, I would say we'd be able to use it for, but it'd probably be on a case-by-case basis for that.
Coghill?
Um, you keep, when you refer to the restoration, you refer to artists. Artists are doing the restoration, or is it separate than the restoration, you know?
Mixed. It's a mixed, it's a mixed combination. It is, it is a combination of firms as well as individual artists that, I know some of these artists have worked with the city before on, again, before we had these ITQs in place, they have done this work before, and we let them know that this was out there and we approved them for it.
So some restoration may require an artist, some may require somebody that specializes in restoration, whether it's concrete or whatever.
Correct. And that's exactly why, that's why we're keeping it, we're, the intention is to keep these low, so that if you understand the difference between small and medium work orders, we're going to issue these all as smalls, so that if it's a specific monument that requires a specific type of attention, we can directly solicit to that.
And a specific monument may require both?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Yep. That's, that's all. Thanks, Joshua.
Absolutely.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation?
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. We now need a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Firms, invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards?
So moved. Second.
And we need a motion to waive the rules, as there are three purchases with George M. Hall Lumber Company that are for separate jobs, but they go over $6,000. And just so members know, this vendor is currently under contract to become an actual vendor for the city, so these won't appear moving forward. But need a motion to waive the rules.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The rules have been waived. Any further discussion on the P cards?
I just want to thank you, Solicitor Friedson, and our Budget Office, Ria Price, and Peter McDebit, because you're really, and, and the Budget Office, or the Office of OMB.
Management and Budget.
Management and Budget. Because they, you're all working together to make sure we do better with these invoices, because they have not been done right over the years. And now I think that we're really making a lot of progress. So thank you all.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards have been approved. That takes us to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. We have one new paper, Bill 1268.
Bill 1268, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Vanderhaus Guild German Shepherds, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $7,900 for the purchase of one canine for the Bureau of Police.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation? That takes us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus. One new paper, Bill, well, first new paper is Bill 1270.
Bill 1270, resolution amending Resolution Number 679 of 2012, which authorized the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a project and license agreement with Riverlife to provide capital improvements and renovations to Allegheny Landing Park by further authorizing a city contribution to dock repair work at a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Motion to approve, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilwoman Warwick?
Well, I just want, I see that some of the folks from Riverlife are there. If you wanted to come up and talk a little bit about the project, is that, yeah.
Not often they come up enthusiastic.
Yeah.
Let's see if they walk away that way.
All introduce yourself for the record.
Yeah, Matthew Galuso, Riverlife President and CEO.
Gavin White, Riverlife Director of Planning and Projects.
Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer in OMB.
Yeah, so I was just going to say, we just wanted to describe a little bit about the plans, just for the public.
Sure. I can, I can set a little table here. We're focused on what we're calling the Sister Bridges Experience, which is nested between the pop district, the Warhalls New Initiative, and the cultural district. There are two city parks that sit between, sort of, could potentially serve as the glue between those, you know, veritable cultural amenities. Both Allegheny Landing and its sister across the bridge, Allegheny Riverfront Park have been loved to death. And so Riverlife has taken it upon itself to work across partnership, including with the city of Pittsburgh, to reposition those parks. As you know, the county is lighting up all three bridges. And so we view ourselves as being sort of a piece of a larger pie to reposition those areas. The first area that we focused on is the restoration of an historic dock that was destroyed in 2018 as a part of an historic ice floe that came down the Allegheny River. There was talk about potentially just removing the dock, and Riverlife asked the city to push hold on that, to give us time to go fundraise for the restoration of the dock. We raised north of $700,000. It actually was the first project in Allegheny County to receive waterfront development tax credits. And so we were able to partner with the corporate community, a couple key philanthropic partners in the city of Pittsburgh to restore that dock. The dock itself has been restored. I have some images if folks want to see. And we are now sort of completing that, that capital stack. And that's, this, this conversation is a part of that. So we're really excited. It's part of a larger initiative within the Sister Bridges, about a $15 million lift. And so we're in design and pre-development for the remainder of the park assets, so.
Thank you, Matthew. I, I believe this is in, were you up, Bobby? You want to go?
I was trying to, yep.
Go ahead, you go. You take it. My question's easy. You go.
You know, this being in my district, I was just excited to, to see, you know, we met previously about a couple weeks ago about, you know, you mentioned this, but also what's happening across the river, you know, in the downtown area. And really just when we made the connection, when I got in office, it's been just a pleasure to, you know, work with everyone at Riverlife and understand all, everything that's going into, you know, the, the work that you're doing, the money you're pulling together, and the way that you're going about trying to, you know, just restore the riverfront the best we can. And I, you know, I like the dock, but I like everything else in terms of the park, how much attention's been paid in the past to move the mosaic memorial, is it a memorial or sculpture?
It's an artwork, yeah.
It's an artwork. The piece, the, the installation piece. So it's phenomenal. You know, if you haven't been there, you should go check it out. And, you know, just excited about this work and, and looking forward to supporting this and future work. So thanks for everything you do.
You know, I, is this in and around the Warhol Museum?
So it's, there is a park that runs between Sixth Street Bridge or the Clemente Bridge and the Warhol Bridge. And, and it's nested amongst office buildings, but it's a city park. It's a city asset. It doesn't read like that. And so our job moving forward is to really reposition the park so that it's an asset for everyone. But it sits on the sort of apron of the, of the Warhalls pop district and their buildings.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, that's what my question was, I guess. Is the Warhol, they're putting the expenses for this? Are they not? Or maybe I'm wrong.
Oh, they're a partner. The, the open space amenities is really our, our charge. And so we work in partnership with them. I will say that the Carnegie Museum of Art, you know, the, the piece that Councilman Wilson just referenced, is part of the permanent collection of the Carnegie Museum of Art. And they actually provide annual, they have a maintenance fund that they service those, those assets.
Now, I love the work you do. And I am excited about, you know, this little area. I feel like, you know, what Warhol's going to be building, I forget what they're building, but they're building on that empty lot site. And, you know, I feel like there's a lot of energy, and it's going to be a really dynamite part of the city.
We agree. I mean, I think if there was, you know, there's plenty of places where we could be investing our time. We believe that room, right, that, that between the bridges, if there's a time for us to be investing in that together, right, investing in that space, it's now, right? We have issues of unhoused individuals, we have public safety issues, we have the revitalization of downtown. I think our job is to be a competent partner in that work, so.
Yeah, yeah. It's a, I visited the Warhol and they kind of went over their plans with me there. And yeah, it's really, really going to be a great little space over there and just tie right into the cultural district. My other question was, I have a place on the Allegheny River, but I'm not allowed to build a fixed dock. So, and obviously, the river rises and falls and ice comes down, and this particular dock was damaged and destroyed at one point anyway. So we're going to put, what, $700,000 into the dock? I mean, isn't it just bound to be damaged? And is, let me just ask you this, is it fixed? Are we allowed to put a fixed dock in, or is it a floating dock?
The, the fixed dock is actually a pretty unique condition, but one that we think is really valuable, because it makes it accessible for people in ways that some floating docks are not, right? So I don't know how it was originally approved, but we did go through the process of approval with the, the PA Fish and Boat folks, the, the DEP and the Army Corps. That original dock lasted from 1984 until 2018, right? And we did do some basic restoration of the, the deck itself, but, but we had never done a restoration of the structure. So we went and rebuilt the entire structure underneath the water, and that was about a $400,000 project, to be fair. But there is still work to do on the safety fence and some other elements. But we, we really feel that, you know, those substructure improvements are, are going to help it last another, at least a few decades without some really cataclysmic event. And so, so it should be pretty resilient in, in the next, you know, couple of decades.
Okay, Gavin, thanks. And, and again, it's a fixed dock. It's pile...
Yes, correct.
Pile of holes going underneath the river surface.
That's right.
Okay. I guess there's special variances for cities.
Yeah, I have to imagine that's the case.
Okay. No, thanks, Patrick. How are you doing? I don't have a question for you. I just wanted to say...
I mean, if I could add also, we have an existing contract, so this resolution is actually amending that existing agreement. It goes out for, for several more years to, to add the commitment. That was approved in the operating budget by council earlier this year.
Yeah, thanks. Good for me.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation?
Thank you. And I'm excited about the work you're doing on my side of town.
We're having real fun over there, too.
That takes us to Bill 1271.
Bill 1271, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Electrocoat Company in the Amount of $29,800 for Improvements to the Vietnam War Memorial Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Human Resources Committee chaired by Reverend Burgess. First new papers, Bill 1266.
Bill 1266, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement with the Mark Hamilton Esquire of Summers, McDonnell, Houdak, Guthrie, and Roche PC to provide legal representation as the Solicitor of the Commission on Human Relations in an Amount Not to Exceed $25,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill 1267.
Bill 1267, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement with Ruder Law for Legal Services Related to the Enforcement of City Code, Chapter 659.03, Unlawful Housing Practices, in an Amount Not to Exceed $125,000.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, Madam President?
Thank you. Just, could you come to the table, Jim? I just wanted to know if you could first state your name and title for the record.
Yes, so this is Jim Hammond, Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations.
Thank you, thank you for all your work. I'm just curious, with the unlawful housing practices, what all that entails, and if you could just explain a little bit, that's all.
Yeah, sure. So, the way that our ordinance is separated out, we have a section of unlawful practices. 659.02 is employment, 659.03 is housing. So, all of the housing unlawful practices are listed under that part of our ordinance. And it talks about all the things that it's prohibited to do if they're based on a protected class. Some of the other stuff in that part of the ordinance is going to relate to some of the things we had to add in order to become substantially equivalent with HUD. So, our agency is a substantially equivalent agency to HUD, a Fair Housing Assistance Program, a FAP. And one of the things that we have to do is we have to be able to provide a housing solicitor when our cases go to a probable cause finding. And the housing solicitor, we do use the housing solicitor for general advice when it comes to housing discrimination, but primarily their role is to represent the complainant and the commission on a, on a case where we found probable cause. That is to say, where we believe that discrimination could have occurred.
That's it for me. Does anybody else have, I'm sorry, you're cheering.
No. Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Just want to thank you for being here, and also thank you for always being there when we pick up the phone and, and, and ask questions on behalf of constituents who are having issues with housing.
Always, always.
Thank you.
Can I just ask you real briefly, how many, you have current board members all appointed, or do you have vacancies?
We have, almost half of our commission is vacant at the moment. We have eight currently sitting, and we have one person whose term expires in May. And then, we have seven who, that are vacant.
So, I'm wondering, if they're vacant for so long, I believe City Council can appoint or something after so long. I, we'd have to look into that. But, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. Our first of her papers, Bill 270.
Bill 270, Ordinance Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VII Business Licensing, Article VII Business Licenses by Creating a New Chapter 768, Short Term Rentals.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman?
For some reason, I just got a real, kind of something in my throat.
You're fragging it, just?
I was like, I gotta talk a little bit here, and I, yeah. Hold on one second.
I hate when they're
Good. I don't know why. Anyway, this, this bill that you have in front of you, or that we're, that we're, that's brought to the table now, there is an amendment by substitution that I have on the table as well, and was sent out last night to members. And I've had some conversations with members, but just to kind of refresh everyone of what's going on here, because it's been held for quite some time. Last year, you know, in, in April, right, I guess it was Easter morning, there was the, the mass shooting at the Airbnb on the North Side. And I think we all were, not only taken back to the casualties and all the harm that's been done to people that, you know, were at that property. But there's been, you know, probably further trauma that's been happening, and probably led to other things that we could speculate about, in terms of, you know, all, just relating to all of our concerns about public safety currently. And so, there was a big effort from the council in the past, from my understanding, before I even came to council, in terms of what they were putting together to regulate short-term rentals, which is what we know as Airbnb, or I think another company is Verbo. And, and so, this kind of, you know, pushed it to the front of, of the agenda at that time. Rightly so, because we, we saw the, the faults in, in the system, or a lack of a system created to actually capture who owns these, these properties, and who's accountable, and who should public safety be connected to. And really, just in general, I mean, if you're gonna rent a unit, you wanna make sure that it's, has the proper inspection, so that when you take your family in there, or, or friends, that, you know, you know that everyone's gonna be safe inside the property, just in terms of regular use of the property. And for the party, you know, Airbnbs, this was also an effort to, in the first step, in terms of starting to get those, those contacts, so that we can be better connected to public safety in terms of stopping and recording any sort of party situations that could, that are going, that are, that could get out of hand, like we saw there, obviously. With that said, talked about the amendment by substitution. So, I'd like to walk through what's happening here in this, in this, in this new bill that would be, you know, substituted in, which is one that would create a new chapter in Title VII Business Licensing, Article 10. And this is Rental of Residential Housing for Short Term Rental Program. So, the chapter is 783, and this creates a new chapter. It'll be administered by PLI, this program, this permit program. It will require operators of STRs, which is, I'll refer to as SDRs, but it's short-term rentals, in the city to get a permit from PLI. These will be issued on an annual basis for each unit, and they can be required and maintained by the owner of, by the owner or responsible local agent. PLI will have to inspect each STR at least once every three years. City Council will establish appropriate annual fee for STR permits. So, like the annual fee schedule that we approve during the, the budget season, that's something that will, you know, will finalize there. The notices of violations by STR owners will be handheld by, I'm sorry, handled by the, the PLI Department, in, in, just in typical usual, usual process. The fine for each violation is capped at $500 for each unit. So, imagine if there's a, a large apartment building that they're renting out each different, you know, apartment, or what they're calling a STR. Each of those units would be, there would be a violation fee for each unit of 500, that, that that unit is, is not, if it's not registered as an STR, so if they're found to be in violation of being registered. Also, the effective date would be 180 days from this passage. And then, all of this language has been vetted by, and approved by law. And I think that was the, my major concern was that if we're gonna do something, we should do something that's meaningful, but we should also do something that is foolproof, so that if there is a challenge, that we could take it on and be successful. So, these amendments, you know, were approved by law. I've been working with them, and I want to thank everyone that's been working on this. I want to thank our, our President Theresa Cal Smith, and Councilwoman Gross for being so supportive of this. I want to thank all the other sponsors. I want to thank Councilperson Erica Strasburger, and also the, the administration for working with us in terms of getting to a place where, you know, we can agree on what's, what can be implemented, because I think that's really important, that, you know, we're, we could pass something here, but we really need the administration to administer government, and to make sure that it's gonna, it's gonna operate smoothly. So, thank the Law Department, thank OMB, I mean, work closely with Jake Pollock and, and, and others, even Kyle Chinopoli was involved. So, I just appreciate everyone's conversation around this and how we can get to this point. And, you know, with that, I'm happy to, you know, talk about this. I know this is new. This is something that we're, you know, we're revisiting this conversation. And I'm open to, I would at least like to hold this for, for weeks. And, and then, but there, there, I'm also open to public hearing, open to briefings for council, whether it's by PLI, or our Law Department. And so, I'll open it for discussion, or I'll, I'll stop my comments and open up for discussion. And hopefully, at the end of it, I can, you know, I'll make the, the amend by substitution and the hold.
Thank you. Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Just wanted clarification, but I think the councilman just made that. I did read your Chief of Staff's communication with members. Appreciate that. Law has asked us not to pass this, but rather to amend by substitution, and to hold for extensive discussion. Happy to do so. Just wanted to make sure that was clear before I made my commitment to vote for the amendment by substitution, and then to hold. So, happy to do so, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam President?
I would just say that because there's so much going on around this kind of stuff, I would just caution members to just keep their comments isolated to this particular amendment. And I would just say that I want to thank Councilman Wilson and Councilwoman Gross, because they've been working so much together, and Councilwoman Gross is working simultaneously on another piece that will mirror, or not mirror, complement what we're doing here. And so, I, I just really want to thank you both, because I think working together, we come together with some really good, good options. So, and we, it's great to have our own City Council Solicitor, and your staff member who's also in law school, correct? And so, he's doing an amazing job, too. So, I just want to, and thank you, thank you, James, in your office, for the work that they do, too. But with that said, I really want to point out that after the tragedy happened on the North Side, that you immediately were looking for things to, to address that situation. And so, I just think that, I don't know if people realize how fortunate they are to have members of your caliber here at the table. I mean, it doesn't, you may not always appreciate them, and people talk about change, and people talk about a lot of stuff, but they don't really know. And sometimes it's jumping, you know, from the pot into the fires, what I tell people sometimes. But sometimes they don't realize the magnitude of talent that they have here at some of your offices. So, I just want to, I just want to congratulate you, and thank you all for working on this together.
Councilwoman Gross?
Great, thank you. Yeah, I want to thank Councilman Wilson and his staff. I'm really supportive of these changes, and, you know, we'll still have time to chew on them and think about them, and talk to the Law Department. But again, just to revisit, like you did, Councilman Wilson, it's like, this, this bill will create licensing, because we do not have licensing at the city level right now for short-term rentals, right? This, this bill will create inspections, because we do not have inspections. This bill will create systems of citations and penalties, because we don't have those in place. So, it is taking some time, but we, and we know that the number of Airbnbs has increased, but I don't even think we have an accurate count today. And I know it's increased throughout the district that I represent as well. It was always kind of at the top of the density of them across the city. But I think even in the last couple of years, we've seen a dramatic increase. And we're, we're just getting that kind of anecdotally by just our experiences on the street. I was out at the Bloomfield Farmers Market, there's a winter market, and half the people I talked to were from out of state, which is really unusual for a neighborhood farmers' market in the city, right? It used to really just be the neighborhoods that were nearby. And I don't know for a fact, but I suspect that that's because of an increase in Airbnbs in the adjoining neighborhoods. So, I'm eager to move this forward as well, as, as Councilman Smith, Councilwoman Smith mentioned. My office has been doing research on other kinds of parts of ordinance that we could put in place. But I could, you know, we do it iteratively instead of like giant packages. So, this is like the first bite of the apple. We're getting close to this one. And if we need to kind of tighten up areas in other parts of the code, we can do that as well. And we're, we're putting some of that research together. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick?
I do want to say, just generally, just for the record, I, I am very supportive of this bill. I do, I have a few questions as it would relate to folks doing rent, I mean, that we don't, but rentals, like, if you're renting a room in your apartment, you know, if you're young and renting a room in your apartment, just for a little extra money, how this might affect those folks, because that is a scenario. But, but what I really wanted to say is that when it comes to a vote for this, I'm gonna need to recuse myself, I think, because my, my husband actually has some rentals, and I feel like maybe that might be a little bit of a conflict of interest. So, I mean, unless a vote needs to be, you know, led, some kind of tiebreaker.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you. I do want to thank the, those who have been working really hard on this, Councilman Wilson, Councilwoman Gross, and their staff, and everyone who's taken part in this. The one question I have, which is about 783.04 inspections, that they will be inspected at least once every three years. And I just wondered if there had been discussion about if a, there is like a repeat offender, or like, there is an inspection of a property, and it fails a whole set of, of the tests, or, you know, does not, fails the inspection in one way or another. If there was discussion about either putting in here or in internal policies, like departmental policies, to then go back and inspect more often than three years, like on an annual basis, was that something that was considered or discussed at all?
No, we didn't get to that point, but that's a great point.
Okay.
So, good for discussion.
Okay.
I can, too.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Councilman, you want to make a motion?
Motion to amend by substitution.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill has been amended.
Motion to hold for four weeks.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill be held four weeks. That now takes us to Bill 465.
Bill 465, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title V Traffic, Article VII Parking, Chapter 549, Residential Parking Permit Program 549.08, Visitor Permits, Non-Resident Permits, so as to relate the issuance of residential parking permits for short-term rentals to the issuance of licenses by the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections, authorizing the operation of short-term rentals in the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Question, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This bill runs alongside the bill that we just, just held for four weeks. And just to, you know, I just want to do the same thing, just to refresh everyone's memory. So, whenever we overhaul the residential permit parking program, we put in place different passes. And so, short-term rentals were, was, they were mentioned in there, or that's, there are specific ways you can obtain a, a pass. And so, with that, we're gonna have this, I'd like to have this bill continue to run alongside this other one. So, motion to hold for four weeks.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill be held four weeks. Takes us to Bill 1249.
Bill 1249, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency and Operation Better Block for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Amount of $2,500,000 to Support the Safe Passages Program, which Places Community Elders and Schools to Prevent Violence.
Motion to hold one week?
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. I'm just asking my staff. Thank you. I'm just asking my staff, because last week I asked for the grant application that was written to receive these funds. Did they send it? I'm just, what I'm asking?
They sent some information.
I didn't see it.
I'm pretty sure that was it.
I didn't see it. So, just again.
Can I just say, we've been getting, somebody just sent to me that they sent me some emails, and they never came through.
I agree.
So, I think we're having a lot of issues with our emails, so you may not have received.
I agree. So, but last week I mentioned that there's very little documentation along with this kind of fairly substantial and kind of impactful, possibly impactful, but definitely, you know, large program. And that, I have a problem with that. And so, I'm eager to see what the grant application was. And I think that, as I said last week, that council should be included earlier in the process for these large, larger programs of the administration, even if they're grant-funded. We should not be finding out about it at the last minute. Because then it's, you know, it's like we're leaving money on the table, but we weren't able to be sure that the people we represent were kind of aligned with the goals before the grants were applied for. So, I think there's more to be talked about there. So, that's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All those in favor of a one-week hold, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill be held one week. That takes us to Bill 1277.
Bill 1277, resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of Thought Form Inc. in the amount of $32,557.75 for design services and template creation for the print version of the Oakland Plan adopted as the Oakland area component of the city's comprehensive plan.
Motion to approve discussion?
Second.
Second.
The deputy directors coming up. Thanks for coming to the table.
Yeah?
State your name and title.
Andrew Dash, Deputy Director, Department of City Planning.
Thanks for coming. I had some questions, but I don't want to step on, you know, people that have worked on this comprehensive plan. Okay, yeah, I mean, just, could you just give us a brief, quick briefing on what this is?
Yeah. So, you know, so we, over about two and a half year process, completed the Oakland Plan. So, the neighborhood plan for the four Oakland neighborhoods. Have done all of that through the city's EngagePGH website, had, have the plan hosted there. You know, the intention is kind of moving through the process that it would be a digital plan. At the tail end of the process, you know, there was a lot of, you know, kind of community sentiment around wanting, you know, something paper as well. And so, you know, I mean, the thing was, is we had designed the plan and done all of that work through the Engage site and had it online. And so, that, you know, we had an existing contract with city council that approved back in 2019 with Thought Form for design services for the comprehensive plan. And so, went to, you know, went to then, you know, kind of use that, use that existing contract for them to do this design work that the community was asking us for, you know, for the Oakland Plan. And, you know, through that, you know, through conversations with OMB, realized that, you know, weren't able to extend the contract in the way that that needed to be done and had to come for a warrant. And so, you know, passage of this warrant then, you know, allows us to, you know, to work with Thought Form to create the design for this plan, you know, which the community is asking us for, but also can serve as a template for future work that we're doing where we have an online plan on the EngagePGH website, and then also have a paper version, you know, in work that we're doing now in the Hill District, you know, that's been going on in the Hill District, for example, or other neighborhood plans in the future. So, although the warrant is specifically for deliverable for the Oakland Plan, the intention is that we would, you know, be able to use that template for other neighborhood plans as well.
Okay. So, the $32,000 gets us only the, this is like an ongoing contract to just print out?
It was, it was a contract that was, that was approved for design services, like I said, you know, in the past. So, the funding is from, is from, you know, the funding would be the funding that was there and approved for that contract. It's just that we're not able to use these expenses on the contract because
Yeah.
Contract was expired.
Yeah, I'm just trying to.
We tried to extend the contract and OMB said that, you know, in our conversations with OMB, it was determined that coming back to city council for a warrant was the proper way to move this forward.
So, this is to print out the plan?
It's to create a design template. So, again, everything's, everything right now is in an online version, which doesn't necessarily, it's not like we can just print that. So, we had to, we had to, you know, work with them to create a design template for the plan. There are a lot of, you know, graphics, maps, and other things that we had to, you know, to accommodate in creating a paper version, some of them interactive maps, that then we had to create static versions for the template. So, it's them working with us to do that work and create that version that then can become a print version that we would know that will, for the, yeah, that will distribute.
Only for the Oakland Plan, though?
For the Oakland Plan. But again, the idea is that this template then can be used for other plans as well.
But we're not going to do the other plans until we do the whole city comprehensive plan, is the strategy?
That's correct. So, I mean, we're still, we're still in the, you know, we're still working on, you know, on work with the Hill District and, you know, kind of updates to the Hill District Master Plan. But after that, the intention is that we will be working on a citywide comprehensive plan, but then coming back to neighborhood plans after that point.
So, this will be printed out how many times and put where?
Well, I mean, the intention is that, you know, we'll be, you know, by the fact that we'll have this, you know, be, you know, having that for our partners, whether it's community organizations or residents, or, you know, be a paper version that would be at libraries and other thing, you know, other places like that as well.
All right. I don't have any more questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Director, for being here and for answering some of my questions over email. I'll just ask them again for the purposes of having a broader conversation about it and for your answers already today. It does give me some pause to spend $32,000 on something like this when, you know, agreed upon from the beginning, it was going to be a live digitally. But I just think about the other purposes for this money that we could spend on like a comp plan in public engagement or something. But from the sounds of it, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's, it's, because it's under an existing contractor with an existing contracted firm, we're limited in the way that we would be able to expend this money anyway. Is that along the same?
That's correct. And we'd already, you know, started to work with them on this, assuming that we were able to do so under the existing contract that city council had already approved. So, you know, that's why we're coming back for a warrant at this point. So, the work, that work has already started, you know, and then, you know, we didn't finish that work because that was where the conversations with OMB went to saying that we need, instead of going under the existing contract, that we needed to go the, you know, the warrant route. So.
Yeah. So, while this amount does give me pause, it's a request from the, from community members, and I do see value in making the plan accessible in multiple ways. And it does make me feel a little bit better that this will not then be a template to use for other plans, potentially the comp plan, certainly other community plans. So, it's, yeah, it still feels like a lot of money for this, but I'm willing to vote for it today because of those two reasons, that it will be more than it seems, and it's a request from the community.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
So, I'm just gonna ask, I have a couple of just kind of concrete questions. The previous contract was for how much? Do you recall?
I believe the previous contract was for $173,000.
And you, separate next question, you said the, this would be like a template for taking the digital Engage pages of a project and then putting those into print form. So, is it really kind of like a software or program code, or it's just like an example?
No, no, it's not. I mean, it would be, I mean, we're, the intention is that we're working with them to create essentially in-designed templates and inputting the work from the Oakland Plan, the, you know, that was adopted.
On a website?
You know, yes.
Onto paper?
Yes. And, you know, that, I mean, that's, you know, if you go to the EngagePGH website and look at the plan, it's not necessarily formatted in a way that necessarily would, you know, would translate easily to a document.
But you said this would also create a template for us to do that in the future.
That's correct.
And do you mean just kind of in a suggestion way of like, oh, look, here's a sample, or that it will literally be a template?
The idea.
So that print copies are generated from your future Engage pages automatically?
That we will be able to, that the city and city staff will be able to generate those documents from these plans in the future.
Internally, moving forward henceforth?
Yes. So, there wouldn't, you know, the intention is that there wouldn't be a need for design services like this in the future if a community were to request a paper version, that we would already have a template.
So, they're doing basically some coding to take those pages?
Yeah. I mean, it's primarily design work because a lot of this is working, you know, I mean, ultimately, what we're going to get is.
But they're designing an architecture. I think we're, yeah, we're having a vocabulary problem here, right? So, yeah, so it's not, so you wouldn't have to redesign like a Bloomfield plan or a Hill District plan if you had Engage pages. You wouldn't have to hire out, you could do it internally.
That's correct.
Got it. So, it does actually seem like a, you know, the price tag, including that it kind of eliminates the need to outsource future work, makes the price tag a little more reasonable. And I do personally like having print things, I just wanted to say that. And then, this issue of how it's a warrant, I mean, I think this is one of those cases where it's, you know, you've passed it by the Law Department, so we know that it's legal. Did you say that? Or just OMB?
This is through conversations with OMB and their, you know, you know, around what the proper process was to essentially, you know, because that's, again, I think we were, we were trying to use this under an existing, under our existing contract with Thought Form, that contract expired, and we had, you know, tried to get that extended. They said that the better way for us was to come back to city council and go through the warrant.
Well, yes, we're glad that you are coming back. It's unusual for us. We usually think of warrant as something that someone has a claim against us. And so, we're issuing a warrant. You can see them earlier in the Finance Committee today. So, again, we don't expect to see very many of these, but if everyone says that we're doing this the proper way, then I'm supportive today. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation?
Thank you.
That takes us to Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. Our new paper is Bill 1283.
Bill 1283, resolution providing for the designation and transfer of certain public properties within the Upper Lawrenceville and Stanton Heights neighborhoods to become permanent public passive open space included in the Allegheny River Greenway as part of the Greenways for Pittsburgh program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. I will defer to the bill sponsor, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you all. So, this is about 10 parcels or so that are in our kind of inventory of abandoned properties, but they're completely surrounded by current Greenway. And so, it would just be kind of clearing title to those, but taking, adding them into city property permanently so that they become permanent additions to the Greenway. So, I don't think there's really any kind of contention about it. They are near infrastructure that we are considering abandoning. Some of them are only accessible by a set of city steps that are city street that are collapsed. And so, it would be better not to have anyone ever build on them. And it's very, very steeply sloped and is in landslide-prone area on Steeps Hillside, and we probably should have done this decade, probably should have done it decades ago. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation? That takes us to our Innovation, Performance, Assets Management, and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Warwick. Our first new paper is Bill 1275.
Bill 1275, resolution amending Resolution Number 568 of 2019 authorizing an amendment or amendments to the existing rooftop license agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and 600 GS Prop LP of Pennsylvania Limited Partnership in order to extend the term through December 31, 2028 at a cost not to exceed $380,387.56.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion, Council President?
Yeah, thank you. Is there someone here to speak to this?
Hi. Could you identify yourself for the public, please?
Charles Showers, Department of Business Administrator for Public Safety.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Could you just give me a little synopsis, a little bit more detail on this?
Of course. So, the city has a longstanding lease with GS Prop, which owns the US Steel Tower. The city has had a number of pieces of equipment based on the rooftop of that tower. It forms the backbone of our city camera system. So, obviously, being in its unique location, it's a very helpful place for us to have that kind of antenna equipment and things like that. So, our lease expires this year, and this is simply requesting an extension of that. Very nominal, very slight increase in the cost from $28,000 per year to $30,000 per year.
Has it been extended ever before?
Yes.
How many times?
I believe this is the, this would be the third extension of that lease.
And why has there not been anything done more permanent that you could, instead of having to come and extend it, why aren't you redoing the whole process? Just to make sure it's the best we can do?
Sure.
You just think it's the location?
Oh, understood. Yeah. I mean, it's a unique location, as I said, but I, we are always looking to see if we can find some better, better locations, of course. But there's not really anything that the city owns that would be an appropriate location for this, for this equipment, unfortunately.
You don't own this either?
Well, I can certainly get some more information from our.
Okay. I'll abstain today, but I'd like to know, because I really, I don't like that we continue contracts or leases without coming back to council to make sure we're getting the best for our dollar.
Of course.
And I know other, my colleagues feel the same way, some of them feel the same way. So, we just wanted to make sure. I'll abstain today, but I'm not a no, I just want to know a little bit more.
Understood.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's $30,000 a year, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And that just seems like a lot. I have no idea what the going rate is for rooftop tower. But I doubt that all those kind of 5G and cell towers we see all over the city are paying $30,000 each to us in our rights away. Right? We've had 5G and distributed antenna systems put on our street poles. They're not paying that much. So, is this just very large? I'm sorry, Director, do you want to identify yourself so you can answer some questions?
This is Lee Schmidt, Public Safety Director. So, this camera sits atop the US Steel Building. As we all know, that's the tallest building in the city. So, that is essentially the only space we can put that camera, because it provides a 360 view that our real-time crime center can zoom in to pretty much anywhere in the city, in the North Shore, not anywhere, but, you know, in a large viewable area of the North Shore, north side, downtown, south, like Station Square area, as well as some of the upper areas of the hill.
So, I misunderstood, I think, what we were talking about. So, I was thinking it was like an antenna tower, but it is not. It's like a giant Eye of Mordor or something that's like looking all over the city. I had no idea.
Yeah. And this was actually installed a number of years ago under a port security grant in conjunction with Department of Homeland Security.
So, we got it as a grant, but now we're paying $30,000 a year?
Can I say something real quick, please? So, just, I just know, our solicitor negotiated some of these contracts, and he just said to me, this is a sweetheart deal. We might want to just let this one go and not have to rebid it. So, just say that. Okay.
So, the, but the $30,000 isn't just like rent for a little space, where we're like putting up our own kind of distributed antenna. This is, we're paying for the Eye of Mordor and the space?
We're paying for the camera, the space, as well as all the wiring, you know, because there's the wires, the infrastructure for the camera that runs through the building. I don't, I would have to get our tech guy to explain that portion more, but, you know, all the connectivity in the building, the power of the camera, that sort of thing.
All right. I had now, I missed this somehow. We've discussed this at length before. I don't know if other members recall, but maybe the committee chairs got a more in-depth discussion of the power. discussion of the power. So we have an extraordinarily powerful camera on top of the Steel Building, and it is, or the UPMC Building now, I guess, is the name on the building? And then, and it can see all the way to South Side?
Not to South, Station Square.
Station Square.
Not, like, yeah.
Okay, maybe we shouldn't talk about, since it's Homeland Security, right?
Yeah, okay, so, so, but we're, we're told this is actually the kind of reasonable price for equipment of this sort. And I, I'm, I'm really now having some thoughts about cameras like that. And I think I'm just going to sit back and maybe I'll abstain today. And I think I need to take, to learn a little bit more about this, but I don't want to take time on this agenda today. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Kraus?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You called me, I'm sorry, I couldn't put it right here. Hey, the Director Schmidt, welcome. Thanks for being here. Charles, thank you for being here. Not to put you on the spot, but I believe this may have come into existence back when we hosted the G20 through a port security grant. Is that, do I remember that correctly?
Um, that may be correct. I would have to check records on that. But I know that camera has been there for quite some time. I know this is a newer lease, but I know, and I also know we've replaced the camera with newer technology over the years, but I don't know how long there's been a camera-
I apologize, I didn't mean to overspeak you. The, I know there were, there was a grave concern about port security, our bridges, our riverfront, how it exposed us to different vulnerabilities. I know there was, you know, increased security because we were hosting the G20. That would have been like 2009, I believe it was, that we hosted that. So I think this was residual from that, but I, I understand the importance of this location and the service it provides. And I'm happy, more than happy to vote in favor of it today. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Madam President?
Thanks. I just want to make sure that I say something, like even to the Law Department. We have some of these in my district too, and I just, I won't say where, but I just, because I do know we're not supposed to be talking about them when they come across. But the Law Department used to put a little note on here for us not to talk about the Homeland Security cameras, that we would do a briefing. And so we weren't allowed to talk publicly about them. So maybe we need to make sure that that happens for the future, so that we're not saying or doing things to make us more vulnerable, or less vulnerable, whatever. That we're taking care of things. That's all. But I did talk to our solicitor, Dan Friedzen, who worked on these contracts before he came here, before he left the city. And he said this was a great deal. So thank you for your work on this. So I'll vote in the firm of today.
Councilwoman Warwick?
Um, I just sort of wanted to say, more of a, perhaps a philosophical statement as it, you know, as we talk about costs for things like this, right? A camera, whether a, a shot tracker or a, you know, whatever, other cameras, all this type of equipment, right? Surveillance, security type of equipment, just in a discussion that we'll, we'll talk about another time. But, you know, when we're, you know, and all of this, all of this is intended to keep us safe, right? To prevent violent incidences in the city. And, but at the same time, I, it would, I feel like many in the public would be taken aback if I were to ask the question, what's the proof of the effectiveness of all these things? Can you give us numbers? And I'm not asking, I'm saying, you know, that people, whereas in the same vein, when we're making very comparatively, right, very minimal investments in community programs and things like that, to, to really do the same thing, right? To, to, um, to keep us safe, to keep our kids safe, that, that as, as, as a public, as a society, we really, boy, we want to know. You know, we want to know how effective that money is being spent. We want the, we want really clear details on, you know, deaths prevented and this and that. So it's just something for folks to consider, right? When we, when we talk about safety, you know, on, on, on the, the law enforcement side, we spend freely, right? Without questioning. And I think that, you know, on the, on, and, without really asking, is it working, right? Is it really working? So I think that, not to say that we shouldn't ask questions, maybe we should be asking questions on both sides, right? But, um, but it's just something to keep in mind when we do talk about investments in, um, in other forms of violence prevention and safety for the city.
Yeah, I just want to say to that, I've heard that, those kinds of comments quite a few times at this table and at different times. I think the difference is when we're talking about public safety, it's our people that we're funding, and it's things that are benefiting us and the city. And when we're talking about violence and anti-violence stuff, we want to see those results. And we're talking because the public is saying, this group is getting this kind of funding, and we don't see the result. So that's the difference. And if they want to see the result and the public's asking for it, we have a right to get them the answers that they want to have. And so I think that there's quite a few that are asking a lot about some of the, but to say that we don't ask the funding, about the funding, that is absolutely inaccurate, and it's a nice little talking point. But the reality is, we are going over every one of our trust funds, we are going over the grants, and now how we issue grants, and how City Council doesn't have a say. We're going to be looking at the paving. So I think that there's a lot of things that we're looking into and questioning. And although that sounds great for somebody to say we're asking about these types of things, or about the anti-violence stuff, but we're not putting the money into preventive, I think there's, we want to put a ton of money into preventive. But you know what some of the things that stop us is when we're spending things that are not under our purview. And a lot of us do that too, and take money out of projects that maybe could have helped a community. So I think we have to, you know, look at what we're doing and overall, what is the goal here? Do we really want to keep people safe? Then we've got to, you know, make sure we're doing both public safety and preventative measures. But I think that to come to the table and just say things, just to, for the sake of saying it because you heard somebody say it, or somebody on Twitter said something, is not actually even responsible, and it's not accurate. Just want to say that.
Thank you. Councilman Kargil?
Thank you. First, I want to take the opportunity, Charles, indirecter, to congratulate you for the contract that we sewed up yesterday with the FOP. I think that was a very important step. And I want to thank you for, you know, keeping me abreast of everything throughout that process. I get a chance to talk to you since then. As far as this camera on top of the Steel Building, or UPMC Building, uh, give me an idea how powerful this is. Can it get a license plate, say, that's on the North Shore?
Um, so all of our cameras, remember, we don't monitor them per code. So these are used, this one specifically is mainly used, similar to what Councilman Kraus said, during events, things like the Regatta, which, you know, isn't here anymore, but 4th of July, when there's a lot of river activity, it'll get used to monitor some of that and just to make sure things are being safe. Or if there's an incident on the bridges, you know, someone trying to do something on the bridge.
It's like crowd watching. It's not necessarily going to catch a license plate or something.
No, it doesn't have LPR abilities. Could it zoom in far enough to read one and happen to be in the right place in the North Shore? I don't, I doubt that. I've seen that camera-
Starters at 65 stories in the air, right? So that's a lot of ground to cover.
Yeah, but it doesn't have the LPR capability. So it wouldn't be monitoring camera, or vehicles through this camera at all.
Just the eye in the sky, crowd control.
I mean, it's essentially, you know, some cities have helicopters or other things. We don't have those. We don't need those. This is a-
And Director, let me ask you this. Who in the police department or public safety oversees cameras? So say there's something we want to draw from that-
Like somebody breaking in on the side of the City Council?
Yeah. And, uh, so, so who actually, you know, monitors that and, you know, pulls that? Is that-
The police-
Is it the same people as ShotSpotter, for instance, or?
Yeah, so Dan Shack is our technology manager. So he oversees all technology projects and makes sure their infrastructure is there, working with IMP vendors to, to maintain all that. The police have access to the cameras through the Real Time Crime Center, same with the ShotSpotter, that's through the Real Time Crime Center, to access footage after an incident or during an incident. When that's happening, the Real Time Crime Center will go to a camera and watch the incident as it's unfolding and make sure it's documented and recorded.
And, and, you know, not to get off subject, but I talked to Deputy Mayor Pollock, and Carrick is next slated to be on for ShotSpotter, okay, to expand it. Do you have a rough idea as to what it costs to do a two-square mile area?
I actually gave him those numbers, but off the top of my head, I don't remember.
Right, right. And can I, and again, I hate to, you know, I know we're not here talking about this, but while we have you at the table, uh, ShotSpotter is very effective. You know, I was kind of reluctant because I wanted to try to eliminate the crime before, but that's, doesn't seem to be working out for me. And are you looking that up?
I'm trying to. Go ahead.
So I'm just wondering how easy or difficult it is to expand it. So say we had the funding in place, how, how easy is it? Is it just a matter of putting these detectors in certain spots? And it's not a-
I mean, essentially, it takes a little time to put them up. They have to find the proper places, work out agreements with, um, the, you know, if they're going to put them on a building or on a tower, they have to work out the agreements with that. And then they have to test the system. But, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll follow up with it.
It's about a, you know, probably six-month period from the time we-
Okay, I'll follow up with Jake. I mean, it's a matter of getting the funding, I guess, is the main thing. So, okay, no, that's, that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for first round?
I, I just, real quickly, I want to ask, would you consider doing a grant program where, for businesses or for residents, where they could get cameras if they worked with the police, if they did something? Would you just consider something like that? Some type of grant program where they can get like a, you know, not a ringing doorbell, but something like that, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we had similar systems before, but the, the problem with that is maintenance and disparate systems, you know, that don't connect to the Real Time Crime Center that police can't necessarily access. So what we've looked at is a different, little different model that a lot of cities have gone to now is with the newer style cameras, there are ways for them to share through websites, upload if an incident happens.
I'm curious if there's any, like, data that makes any kind of correlation that with the cameras, there's less complaints about police officers because you're using things other than police. I'm just curious what kind of data there might be available. Do you know of any?
We have some on it. I can have our data analyst.
Okay. I'm just curious. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1276.
Bill 1276, Resolution Providing for the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Route Smart Technologies, Inc., which provides trash and recycling routing optimization for the purchase and implementation of navigation software that will provide turn-by-turn directions to environmental service drivers, cost not to exceed $149,740 through December 31, 2025.
Motion to approve?
Second.
With discussion, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. Appreciate it. I think I'm like unreasonably excited about this, and I want to know more about it. We have talked about the vehicle miles traveled of our trucks.
I'm sorry, this was Councilwoman Warwick.
We know we have, uh, taught, we just had the debate last week about the types of kind of temporary vehicles that we need while we transition our fleet, and where we have fueling stations, or shouldn't have fueling stations, temporary fueling stations, mobile fuel, fueling stations, those kinds of things. And so, but, and also that we've struggled with staffing in environmental services, which is a shame, because for many, many years, I think all of us at the table said, gosh, we never get a complaint about environmental services, and that was so wonderful. And so we want to support them and their work, but is there anyone here who can tell us a little bit more about route optimization? We also kind of struggled with snowplow tracker, right? And so-
The director's here.
Oh, do you mind coming up, Director Hornstein? Thank you. Appreciate it. Right? And so, wouldn't it be great if we had a routing system that our employees were happy about, but also helped us kind of figure out which trucks were too big for making certain turns, for example, which is something that I complained about, about these new CNG trucks that we actually got in hand, is that I could show several videos of them getting stuck and creating property damage in Lawrenceville because the alleys are too small and they can't make the turns. And then I also filmed myself one while I was safely stopped at a red light of one of our brand new CND trucks, basically having to do a five-point turn, turn off of Bigelow, Craig, taking a right onto Baum, which is not a narrow turn. And still, our, our city of Pittsburgh waste hauler had to do a five-point turn in order just to make a simple 90-degree right-hand turn. So it would be great if an optimization system. Now we have several different kinds of vehicles in the fleet. We got certain types of fuel for certain vehicles. So what are we looking at here, Director? You can introduce yourself.
Chris Hornstein, I'm the Director of Public Works. So this is, you know, been a longstanding ask of the Bureau, Environmental Services. They have not had their routing optimized in some time. And because of that, there is a kind of an unequal load of distribution of work. So some routes are, are gathering more waste and some routes are gathering less waste. And so the first step in the process in terms of optimization is to, you know, establish all the routes, compare them against the, the weight that's being hauled. And then we will rebalance those loads so that there's an equivalent level of waste being collected in each route. This will help save our workforce. It will also help with longer-term vehicle maintenance and care. So that's the first step in the process. I think some of the other notions that you brought up are really intriguing and kind of dependent on having a system in a place that allows us to do that. That's certainly something that we've talked about. Truck vehicle size, staffing allocations are always constant concerns of mine as it relates to environmental services. But I believe the first logical step in that is establishing the system that allows us to adjust the routes in the future so that if we want to contemplate what the impact of a smaller vehicle might be, so we can provide more service, that way we can project it out and see what, what we might need to ask of council in terms of support of service to make that kind of transition. But it starts with route optimization.
Yeah, I think every person here has probably experienced Google Maps or Apple Maps telling them to do something that was dumb while they were driving, or not realizing where they were. And so telling you to make a turn before it was actually time to turn or whatever. So I do worry about kind of the input of information and questions that you're putting in. If you're not accommodating trucks and what size streets they fit on, that's a problem. So I do want to make sure that this contract can accommodate that. How can I be sure that it can?
Well, I mean, the, the turn-by-turn is an assist for the driver, you know, similar to snow operations, right?
But also, like, how do you keep, I think it's Harrison Street, I'm actually kind of forgetting, how do you keep those larger, longer trucks with low, like, bad turning radiuses off a Harrison Street?
Um, you know, we would service those right now with a smaller vehicle pickup.
And so do you keep that street off of the route optimization? Like, kind of, like, this needs to be thought through. And as someone who is like, I, I, I'm worried about the input, and I think that's the same kind of issue we have with snowplow tracker, when we're like needing to include the on-the-ground knowledge that are both our drivers and our supervisors have about their neighborhoods and streets and routes. How do we make sure that that is, like, their knowledge is both valued and validated and then included in the optimization?
That's part of the, that's part of the development process, right?
And so tell us a little bit about that.
Yeah. So, you know, the first thing is capturing all the routes that we currently have on paper and digitizing those. You know, the drivers still have the latitude to kind of quote-unquote solve the problem as they see fit in their daily route, right? Whatever the situation they may encounter, whether they feel the vehicle can navigate because somebody may have parked too far away from the curb, or it has become too narrow for a variety of reasons. They still have that discretion. They'll always have that discretion. But the beginning start is, can we, can we take that information, digitize it so that we have it in a digital format? And then the next step in that process is to balance it against weight and load, and then project what that route is, and then engage with each driver of each route to test it and establish this protocol in a manner that they can look at it and see that this makes sense, this doesn't make sense, or, you know, provide that kind of human logic to it, that the system can't necessarily project.
Can you give us, that, that makes sense. I appreciate it. Can you also give us a sense of, you said we need to redistribute routes because some routes have, you know, the work is not evenly distributed and some loads have increased. So how does that happen? Are there suddenly 100 more homes on a route that hasn't changed? Or have the routes kind of been kind of creeping and changing over time?
They creep and change over time. Development happens over the city over the course of the year, which we pick up. Development happens over the city of the course of the year, which we pick up, and those things have to be incorporated into the routes.
So for example, a route may be always included, three streets that had no houses and now there's many houses on those three streets.
That's correct.
Right, and so, yeah, I mean, I've definitely seen a lot of infill in my district, but there's even outside of my district boundaries but near me, that's absolutely had, I mean, there, there are streets that didn't have homes for, had only empty lots for 30 years and now there's 300 homes. Yeah, so that's, it's going to be interesting and I wish you well. Like I'm, like I said, I'm kind of excited about the upside potential, but we've also seen some downside potential with these types of attempts in the past, so. Uh, I don't know if there's any other support council can give you except for good luck. And we'll, we'll be with you when, if there are complaints, but hopefully if, there won't be and it'll be improvements, so I appreciate it.
President?
I just, was there an RFP for this?
Uh, yes, I believe so. I believe we worked with IMP and Procurement Office on that procurement.
I'm gonna be honest, I, I feel like this is nothing different than with the GPS that we have for the, for the, for the other employees, for DPW, and they were never happy with that and I'm not, I've not been happy with it. I've not seen any real results benefiting the community from it. But what I do see is, when I go to Scott Township where my mother lives, right past your house in Bethsbanksville, when I go, when I go there, on their trash collection day, it's spotless. There's garbage cans out and the next day, the truck comes out, takes, collects them, and then the next day, there's not any trash left on the street. That's what I notice. And what I noticed, the problem in our area is not whether our, our trucks have GPS and not whether our trucks have any kind of, you know, system, technology system. What I notice is we're missing the people to go behind and clean up after our trash people. Because it's not fair that people are living in filth and squatter when we're supposed to be collecting the trash. And I get it that we have contracts and they can't lift a can over 40 pounds and there's certain things that they cannot do, but what are we doing, what effort are we putting forward to making sure that we're getting up the trash that's left behind? And I don't want to hear, I know we're talking about another, possibly another anti-litter campaign, which I started the first one, and I think that all those things are great, but we actually have to have somebody go behind and clean up the trash. Because if you go into some of my neighborhoods, it's disgusting afterwards. And at the same time, I know that, that the, the collectors cannot go around lifting cans up, they're extremely heavy. So the answer should be that we have somebody coming behind, and I know we have supervisors that drive behind too, but they drive behind in a truck, may pick up large pieces, but who's picking up the little stuff that's left behind? I've had somebody reporting trash, I have a lot of people reporting trash left on city streets for months and we send them to, you know, somebody to, you know, you know, to the magistrates, we'll send IMP in. But this whole system that we created here, and this is not your, I want to say this has been decades of this going on, where it's almost, well, we did our job and so, okay, that's it, so live next to the trash. And, oh well, we did our job, but we're waiting for the magistrate. And, oh well, we did our job, but it's state laws. I'm so tired of all the excuses, I just want us to do what's right for the public. And to me, doing right for the public is coming up, starting with cleaning up after trash day, collection day. So could you talk a little bit about that? Because I remember years ago, I asked a previous person here at the table, wasn't, he wasn't a director, he was the Chief Operations Officer. And he said, we're gonna start doing more proactive, you know, cleaning up, not having people having to respond, we're gonna do things, if we see something wrong, we're gonna do it. But it never happens. We don't even do it when people are reporting it. So I'm just trying to figure out what's about, what's, has, there've been conversations, and I'm sure there has been, or has been, where we're talking about what we can do, how we can do better trash collection. And I'm wondering if maybe the trucks we're ordering should be the trucks that they have in Scott Township and other places where it's an arm that picks up a trash can and puts it right in the truck and sets it back down and there's no trash left behind and that's it. I mean, it's, it's unbelievable. They have rentals too in, in Scott Township, lots of them, but there's not trash left all over the place.
Yeah, I think, well, there's a lot in there that I want to respond to.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm just frustrated for the residents.
To the, to the issue, you know, to the issue of the arm, which I think everybody agrees is great technology, certainly our staff agrees, you know, that is a situation where that's not a truck that we can deploy to every city neighborhood. There's just certain neighborhoods like Lawrenceville where we, that, that technology won't work because there's not enough available space for the truck to maneuver.
So for the large trucks, are there, are there smaller trucks with that capability?
Well, it's, we, we constantly are looking at the market of garbage trucks to see what kind of improvements.
So maybe if we use the bigger trucks in, I don't want to interrupt you, but I'm saying if we use the bigger trucks in areas where we can and then put a different focus on those smaller streets where we can't use those trucks.
Absolutely.
Instead of, just think outside the box, is all I'm asking.
No, I, I completely agree and I actually think that the routing technology is the, the step to be able to think outside that box and to, and to look at those situations and project that impact. So I think that is the first way that you need to be able to look and see, okay, if I change this route, if I go to a smaller truck, that's two people, that's more trips to the landfill, I need a way to be able to project that impact so I can come to you and say, this is what we're going to do and this is what the operational impact of this is gonna be and here's what the potential impact to citizens might be.
You know what I'm...
Right now, that's extremely difficult for us to do.
I hear you. And what I really want is for us to weigh the impact of not doing these things in the city of Pittsburgh and the vast amount of people that we're losing in terms of residents in the city of Pittsburgh, because we don't do what our suburban areas do that border all of us. And so in some ways, you know, we're not keeping people safe, in some ways, we're not picking up trash, we're not demoing houses, we just keep blaming and pointing the fingers at other people instead of saying, what is our part and how can we do it better and different? And how can we collaborate to make sure that we're doing the best thing, to make sure that we're providing free, clean, safe environments for our residents to live and, and for our kids to grow up in. So, I'm sorry. I know you're doing your best and I do want to say, you have more than anybody in the previous, I mean, you, you obviously do think outside the box on a lot of things. I don't always agree. And this probably is thinking outside the box, right? Technology, that probably is. But for me, I'm just like, pick up the darn trash, that's all I feel. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this sounds very familiar to snowplow trackers, so are we gonna see the, you know, when our trash is gonna be picked up on a screen?
That's the, well, I, you know, I, I think for us, the first, the first part is, you know, you're getting the technology established and the routes established and we'll leverage those other benefits from there. That would be my first, my first opinion on that.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I was just in regards to what you were saying, I mean, it would be not, I don't know if it would be for the next budget year or whatever, it would certainly be a, a staff issue, right? But I know, I mean, in addition to trash, just since we're talking about it, in addition to trash sort of being left behind, even worse on a windy day, right? I, I mean, and I see this all over the city, I see it a lot in my neighborhood where we have, you know, 376 coming about, I mean, there was just, there was, there's garbage everywhere, everywhere that's not somebody's home, you know? There's just, it's gar, and it's gross and it's, I mean, people, it's also people just, you know, leaving their beer cans on the ground or whatever. And, and we do have these community cleanups a couple times a year, which is always nice and it's like a breath of fresh air after, for a month, but it would be great to have a team or teams at, at DPW that really just went around and, you know, in the same way that the parks get picked up, that just kind of went around, like just walked around and went up in the sort of side, you know, those thickets in the side and got all the, because, because it does, it's just really unsightly and, yeah.
I, I agree.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
It's disgusting. I think Council President, I mentioned some of the other things too, although I will point out that I haven't actually seen too many issues come across my desk where the garbage, from the garbage truck was actually coming out onto the street, but the ones that we have, we've always sent crews up there to clean up behind it. If you have those issues that are coming up, please let me know, we'll make sure the crews are up there to clean those up as soon as possible. There's no reason that we can't clean up after the garbage truck on its route if, if the garbage is coming out and correct that behavior as soon as possible.
I've responded.
Yeah.
I'll wait till she's...
Councilman Kaku?
Hi Director. So this reminds me, this is, you know, as Councilwoman Gross was saying about the length of the truck, making five-point turns, these compressed natural gas trucks, are they going to be, regardless of what the GPS tells that driver, they have to really stay on Main Boulevard's wide avenues. Two or three feet is a huge difference as far as the length of a vehicle. And I know in my neighborhood, it's just condensed, the roads are small, as I think Councilwoman Gross mentioned a couple weeks ago, this is an old city. My father was a truck driver and, you know, just getting around and making a turn and damaging property, going into people's yards and things like that. Have we had any complaints or any damage, have we had any loss, you know, lawsuits or, I don't want to say lawsuits, but you know, have we had to reimburse anybody for property damage on these CNG trucks?
Uh, not, to my, to my knowledge on the CNG trucks, not yet. But, but I, yeah, to the point, like, from what I see in our own system with, you know, vehicle incidents that are reported, it's only a matter of time. So the notion that the trucks are too big, to me, is well documented, that we need to figure out ways to transition the fleet to that. That transition is gonna obviously cost money and take time, but I believe that we can get there. Again, as I stated earlier, I do think that the first logical step in that process is to have like a technological tool that allows us to accommodate that quickly and efficiently with no impact to residents' pickup.
Yeah, and I know you're conscious of that because I know in some of my neighborhoods that have real tight, skinny roads, they send a, you know, 2,500, 1,500 pickup truck down there and then, you know, exit out. So, okay, yeah, I mean, the compressed natural gas trucks, they, they do concern me just about the tight turns. Will you be using those throughout the city? Will you be using those in my district?
I, I don't have the answer to that question, but I can find it.
We have, we, we have, how many on the road now? 12?
Well...
12 more coming, I believe? Yeah.
So it is an increase in, in our usage of that type of vehicle type.
Right, right. Okay. No, it just, it just reminds me as to the snowplowing, as you pointed out, you know, how I'm always fighting for a smaller, nimbler fleet. And it is kind of, you know, after Councilwoman Gross brought this up a few weeks ago, I didn't even realize they were two, three feet longer, so it's gonna be tight and have to keep on wide boulevards and I hope they don't. I know we always get damaged, you know, snowplow trucks are always sliding into people's vehicles and everything like that, but if they can't make the simple turns off a boulevard, that's, I feel like we're going against what, we really should be looking for a nimbler fleet. But I get it, you know, these are, it's grant money, we're not gonna, you know, look at, give horse in the mouth, mouth, so. I wasn't happy about the fueling station that we have to pay for, but especially the Councilwoman, Council President Tracy Keel Smith says there's one in her district and I understand about location, but we also have a lot of property, can't we store those vehicles near her gas station? But, okay, no, that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just want to say something, just real quickly, I just want to thank DPW, because DPW does do a ton of cleanups, I do want to say this, they have removed hundreds of tons of debris from Sheridan alone. Hundreds of tons, every year, twice, once or twice a year they do it. But I'm talking about the everyday living and, you know, that, and we do do a lot of cleanups. So I do, but I do want to say, it's the everyday, like after trash we pick up, people just don't want to live with the filth, they're just so tired of it. And I, I'm tired of driving by and I do the cleanups, I used to do cleanups all the time myself, but, you know, it's just, and I, and I still do them occasionally, but it's just, it's, it's difficult to see after you go into other areas and see how amazing they look. You didn't even know there was a trash collection the day before, it's crazy. That's it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation.
Oh no, I'm sorry, I want to say no. No, no for me.
One in opposition. Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our last committee, Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Gross. We have one deferred paper, Bill 1173.
Bill 1173, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for proposed land development located at 4554 through 4564 Penn Avenue at parcel numbers 49M121, 49M122, 49M123, 49M124, 49M125, 49M126.
Motion to approve brief discussion?
Second.
Second. Thank you. So we're following this project, it still doesn't even have its preliminary planning approvals, and so there's no, again, just for the record and for the administration, I've sent the emails before, but I'll send them again, if we're not even sure what they're gonna build, we shouldn't be approving the sewer modules. So we'll, we need to talk about when the administration sends these over to our docket. And so we, they shouldn't be here. And if I have to have us vote it down so that it has to be resubmitted, we'll talk about that maybe in four weeks after, I motion to hold this for four weeks.
Second.
Counselwoman Wilson?
Where on Penn Avenue is this?
It is in between, like after Children's Hospital, across from the cemetery.
I gotta keep track.
It is not the strip district. Now that you represent some of the Penn Avenue.
The longest street I had to keep track of previously, I think, was in my district, was Brighton Road.
Wow, yeah, for years.
And that went through my whole district, so now...
For years, I had something like six, from like 1100 Penn Avenue to like 6,000 Penn Avenue, or 5,800 Penn Avenue, right? So that was a very long street.
Penn Avenue goes all the way to Philly, so.
There you go.
There you go. I took it one time, by the way.
All, all those in favor of a four-week hold, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill be held four weeks. That does exhaust our agenda for today. We do have meeting announcements. Tomorrow, Thursday, March 9th at 1:00 PM, council will hold a pre-agenda, pre-agenda interviews for the Pittsburgh Parking Authority, the Public Art Committee, and the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board, and the Clean Pittsburgh Commission. Next week, council will hold our regular standing committee meetings on Tuesday, March 14th and Wednesday, March 15th at 10:00 AM. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 AM the day of the meeting. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage and we also call the City Clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Is there anything from members? Madam President?
I just want to congratulate Feustball, Elliot, West End Athletic Association. Feustball's teams, they swept the tournament yesterday, three games, so they, they, they won all three. So I want to congratulate them and thank City Parks for all the work they do and the director, she was there yesterday as well, after putting in a full day here, she went out and supported the kids and the organizations that are doing stuff in the community. So I want to acknowledge Director Vargas for her amazing performance too. And I want to say if any members want to march in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, we have a city council section going, so just, but we, and we need to know today if you're marching or not. Thank you. That's it.
Anything else from members?
No, you can let, Ms...
So with the indulgence of members, I believe we have an individual who came to speak and provide public comment, but came a little late to the meeting, so we wanted to afford them the opportunity to still have their three minutes before city council.
Because she's special.
So if you would like to come forward, provide your name, neighborhood for the record, you'll be given three minutes to speak.
My name is Yvonne Brown, I live at 715 Mercer Street, that's right at the top of where the Civic Village used to be. You've sort of taken me out of my element, I'm surprised that they let me speak, but I thank you. Because I think that with you letting me speak is showing that you possibly are starting to listen to what the citizens are saying. I'm not coming down here just for myself. I want to say something to you, Mr. Lavelle, when you came to the meeting, you remember there was a young, the fellow in the red, he has a car that he sits in, he laughed and joked at him haul, but he had came to me, I went, I, I live in, in the senior citizen home, I went to wash clothes, that big, large man was holding up his pants and he said he had went to Shenley Park and he was screaming, they, look at the paint on my pants, he said, they don't know what paint they're using. He said, I used to work for Virchow for five years, they don't know what paint. And he said, when he started fussing with the people from Public Works, they wanted to know, see his license, and I said, and they have no business asking you about the license. So he had said, I said, you need to come to city council, I'm coming, I'm coming. Okay, so when he didn't come, and yes, gave city council, gave council, gave them a proclamation, them a proclamation. I said, you see what you did? They got a proclamation and you can show that they don't know what they're doing. And so, when I said that, he got mad. He called me all kind of MFers. MFers. That's what he called me, you MFer. I said, because I can't stand a liar. I said, you have me going down there saying things and yes, won't come down. I wanted to let you know that there's a lot of times they come down here or you come up there, they hem-haw and smile on your face. But we, the citizens in the building, catch hell if we try to tell you what, tell, we try to speak out what's wrong. I want you to know that this, Ms. Smith, I want you to understand, there is a man that the resident that kicked the whole door out, broke the door. I came down in the early morning, he's sitting down there. We do not have any guards. And what one of the residents said to you, the very last thing he said, we don't want to hear nothing about guards. He, she said, I just want to tell you this. If there's a guard or anybody sitting there with a uniform on, they won't try to come. They'll go about their business. But if you ain't got nobody in there, how is the man that cost that company thousands of dollars, he broke the whole screen, whole door, kicked it in because he couldn't get in. And he's back in and nobody, and when we called the police, they say, did the manager know? The manager's not there a lot of times. We're the only one that knows. You need to understand, listen, I have been threatened by that man. When he spoke to me, he's gained weight. I said, oh, I said, you questioned me when you tried to jump on me. If Wendy hadn't caught you. She did. She, twice, the first time I was jumped on, I still messing up with my foot. I was being choked to death. But the only reason why I'm saying, you just need to understand, I'm not just coming down here.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. I'm catching hell.
If nothing else from members, we now need a motion to excuse the absent member. Approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
To move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.